... delightful, and since we've no place to go, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. It doesn't show signs of stopping, and I brought some corn for popping. The lights have turned way down low, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. When we finally get to die, I'm going to go without a storm. But you're really holding tight. All my way home I'll be warm. The fire is slowly dying, and my dear, we're still confiding. But as long as you love me so, let it snow, let it snow.
Or let it snow.
Snow, let it snow. Snow, let it snow. Let it snow. Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh. Over the fields we go, laughing all the way. Bells on cocktails ring, making spirits bright. What fun it is to ride and sing a sleigh song tonight! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride. And soon Miss Penny Bright was seated by my side. The horse was lean and lank, his fortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank and we we got upshot. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Now the ground is white, go with while you're young. Take the girls tonight and sing this sleighing song. Just get a bobtail nag, two forty for his speed. Then hitch him to an open sleigh and crack he'll take the lead. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh!
Thanks so much for having us here tonight.
Sleigh bells ring, are you listening? In the lane, snow is glistening. A beautiful sight, we're happy tonight! Walking in a winter wonderland. Gone away is the bluebird who says, "Do ba do da." He sings a love song as we go along. Walking in a winter wonderland. Oh, in the meadow we can build a snowman. Then pretend that he is parson brown. He'll say, "Are you married?" We'll say, "No, ma'am." But you can do the job when you're in town. Later on, we'll conspire to have some dream by the fella. To grace unafraid the plans that we made. Walking in a winter wonderland. Walking in a winter wonderland. Walking, walking. Walking in a winter wonderland. Sleigh bells ring.
Yeah, they want you to introduce yourselves. Should I take this out here? Okay. Do you want to say your name and what year you are?
I'm Any Lou and I'm in 11th grade.
I'm KB Doe and I'm a senior.
I'm Tori Match and I'm a senior.
I'm Bailey Stevenson and I'm a junior.
I'm Maria Grismer and I'm a junior.
I'm Emma Pfeifer and I'm a senior.
I'm Kat Granis and I'm a senior.
I'm Alexa Sandberg and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Jack Johnson and I'm a senior.
I'm Eric Herring and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Alex Breitow and I'm a senior.
I'm Jonas Hallstrom and I'm also a senior.
I'm Sammy Travis and I'm a junior.
I'm James Hoops, I'm also a junior.
I'm Carter Banworth and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Ethan Williams and I'm a senior.
And I'm Derek Dolez and I'm a junior.
Thank you so much. It's always like a great kickoff to the Christmas season to have you guys come and sing for us. So thank you very much. It sounded beautiful. Five point O is public comment. At this time, individuals may speak to the school board on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. The board will not respond to or discuss your comments. Character abuse or specific complaints identifying staff, students, or task force members will not be permitted. The superintendent may be asked to prepare a response to your concerns, and our policy allows for three minutes per person. So we do have someone who had signed up this evening, Jolene Wright.
Thank you Superintendent and School Board members, or sorry, members. My name is Jolene Wright and I'm a citizen of Cottage Grove. I am joined by other mothers in our community. A few weeks ago, our community faced a tragedy as we lost one of our youth to suicide. Joey was only fourteen years old and attended Cottage Grove Middle School. Unfortunately, Joey, like so many of our other youth, was a victim of bullying. His bully only got one week's suspension for the nastiness that caused a life to be taken. Last year, on the school bus home, my son, who was in sixth grade at the time, had a knife pulled out on him and his friends. The child had a knife on campus all day and then threatened others when he took it out. He too only got one week's suspension. My son took a different bus home the rest of the year terrified of this child. We understand we cannot fully stop bullying. We are all guilty and so are our children. My son, I'm sure, aided to the fire that caused the other child to use a knife. However, when bullying threatens the life of a child, policies need to be harsh enough to protect them. The policies that are in place right now need to be relooked at. While they work for the bullies that are meanies per se, they do not work when a bully brings a weapon to school or continues banter of another child to kill themselves. This is an issue nationwide. It's not just up to the teachers, the counselors, but also the parents. We understand that. We are here because we all failed Joey, and it's now up to us as a community and a district to make sure it doesn't happen again. We understand there is an open discussion on January seventeenth, and we will be there with our questions. I only ask that we work together as a village to not fail another child who feels their life is threatened. I want to end with this. The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in the moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., thank you for your time.
This is public comment.
G matter, St. Paul Park. If you read these. Finally, it was posted in this that the date and time of this meeting. Previous issues are not posted. The only reason I think this was posted, it was because of the taxation issue. I mean, I've called the office. They have to look it up. They say, "Go look it up on the computer." I don't have a computer. I mean, you put, you mark your, you have this, mark your calendars, next steps. You have all these dates, but you never put the meeting, the date and time of this meeting. To me, that's like you don't want people involved. You make it hard for them to find out when this meeting is. I think that's very disingenuous of you people. Thank you.
Just want to say thank you to the parents who came tonight. When we lose a child, you know, we all feel that deeply. Of course, we're all parents and we just want to say thank you very much for your, for coming tonight and speaking. Six point O, our consent items. All consent items are considered routine and non-controversial by the board and will be approved by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Prior to the meeting, board members have had the opportunity to review each of the items and could have requested that one be moved to an action item. That hasn't happened this evening, so we will approve the consent items as one slate. So I will entertain a motion to approve our consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Michelle, second by Ron, and I will have Ron read our donations.
Yeah, thanks, Tracy. Again, one of the items in our consent agenda item is actually six point six, and that's a resolution to accept the gifts for this last month. And we certainly want to thank all those generous donors of financial gifts. We had a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and four dollars donated to the district, which gives us a school year total now of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars. So again, thank you all for your generosity. We also want to thank folks that, you know, don't show up on the piece of paper and donate all those hours and time in our classrooms helping our students. At the end of the meeting, we do have quote-unquote "the credits" roll after the meeting. So if you see a name of a person on the, on the screen that you might know in the community, please stop by and, and thank them for the board also. So thank you.
And of course, we have Ron letting you know what our generous community has gifted to us. But we had notification that we also give back to our communities. So the FIAE teachers from Lake Middle School and Woodbury Middle School donate clothing that isn't claimed, and they give it to local charities like Stone Soup, Dayton Avenue Presbyterian Church, Eastside Giving Rack, Harbor Light, Men's Shelter, and Goodwill in Woodbury. So just wanted to recognize those teachers from Lake, Nancy Nichols, Dan Opaths, Tim Kimmel, and Justin Feldcamp, and from Woodbury, John Heins, Heens, sorry, and Wade, Wade, we're gonna guess, sorry, Dino, Dino, and Greg Schmitz. So thank you very much. And then Terry Sunnison and his wife wash, sort, and distribute those to the charities. So just want to say thank you to everyone involved. And with that, I will, ah, will, all those in favor say hi. Any opposed? Motion carries. Workshop items are seven point O, and they will be an agenda item on our January third meeting. Eight point O, our information items. Eight point one, our secondary standards. And our Director of Teaching and Learning Services, Kelly Jansen, will join us at the podium.
Good evening, Chair Burnett, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Jacobus, and Cabinet members. Tonight, we're here to give you an update on where we are with standards-based instruction. You heard a lot about it at the elementary level. We are doing some steps at our secondary level, and we wanted to keep you apprised of those. This path started long before us and TLS. As you know, I started in July, and so there's been some great work done previous to this year. In two thousand fifteen, sixteen, social studies was kind of our cutting edge and our first department that took, took this under, under a project for them. The unpacking benchmarks and creating some success criteria. Last year, we continued with a lot of our core courses. Our English Language Arts, our math, and again, social studies did a little bit more work. As you may have heard, I didn't mention science. Some of you may know that MD is bringing new science standards forward. And so we are, while we're allowing time for our teachers to learn about the process, we aren't diving as deep into those standards because we know those will be changing as of next year, so. This year, we were fortunate, as you've heard about some of our restructuring in TLS and teaching and learning, and that we brought on some coordinators. And Dr. Lawrence has been our secondary curriculum coordinator, and she has taken over a lot of the current work. So she is going to walk you through what our teams are doing this year through this process.
Good evening, Chair Burnett, distinguished board members, Superintendent Jacobus, and Cabinet members. I appreciate being here. I'm really enjoying my time in eight-three-three, so thank you so much. Up on the screen, you'll notice, is part of our current secondary work. We call it unpacking the benchmarks, which sounds like you're going on a vacation, but perhaps not so much. The template example that was passed out to you is a, a white sheet. Looks like this. So all core courses have used this template example in which they look at the Minnesota standards if they're a core course, and they break it down into essential questions or questions that will guide students and engage them in their learning, which leads to ICANN statements. What can they do at each level? So much like elementary, secondary is doing the same kind of work. And then success criteria. To what degree can they do those or demonstrate those tasks or skills? And how will then we grade them and report out on it? So the template kind of gives you an example. This is a language arts template. And on the backside is some actual examples on text, citing texts. And if you've ever seen Minnesota English standards, they're very spiral-like. So they repeat and come back, and so we try and make sure that students are always working consistently on their speaking, listening, reading, and writing at every level. So if you, you don't see this now, but if you go home and you look online, you can click on the template example as a link. Schoology you have to log into, but I'll show you that on the next slide. It describes also prioritizing our work at the elective level. And what that means is we use standards, whether it's state or national, to facilitate those. Yep, thank you. So what that looks like, up in the top left is the Minnesota example of standards, and those are at core levels. And for courses in which we have more advanced learning, we use ACT standards. Elective courses such as the ACTF standards are used for world languages. It stands for American Council of Teaching Foreign Languages. So those are the documents that we rely on to base our standards and our ICANN work. Schoology then looks like this. As you know, teachers are juggling a lot of things these days. And in order to help us do that, Schoology is a great learning management system in which teachers can receive training, professional development, a whole host of resources. They can input their own resources and then use this as a tool to help students learn. So not only instruction, but to collaborate with, and then to report grades and to what extent they've learned each standard. This is the, a picture of a document that we use. We use Google Spreadsheets in order to determine vertical alignment. Today, the health representatives from six-twelve met. So that's just another example of how we're looking at our health standards, six-twelve, and making sure that we're meeting all of the benchmarks. On the ground level, it looks like this in the secondary classroom. So you can walk into any classroom and see learning targets on the board. You might see them on an assignment, a project. On the right side of the screen, you'll see an example of a high school example in geometry that's team taught. The success criteria on the bottom, so this is very transparent for students. Like what, you probably remember the question, "How many points do I need to get an A on this?" Or, "How many pages does my paper have to be?" We're now looking at criteria in which it shows levels of learning, and students can complete questions that help address those. So just a different look at secondary work.
So as you know, this is a big part of our personalization, part of strategic planning, and really getting students involved in their learning, which is very exciting at the secondary level. Having them own what they know and are able to do in the class. So our goal is to continue with this, this first round of unpacking of standards and using success criteria for all of our courses. So all of our teachers are able to answer that first question of the PLC. What do we want our students to know? I know there's lots of questions regarding, "What does this mean for grading?" We have done, we've done a lot with the elementary report card. We are having those conversations. There, there isn't one way to do this at the secondary level. So our goal with the strategic plan and relating it to the personalization was to form an advisory group that we'll meet next week involving stakeholders that have gone through the process, administration, building, our school administration, and really begin that conversation of, "How do we get this into our middle schools and then eventually possibly into our high schools?" While still honoring that GPA and the transcript and everything that's necessary for those students. So we don't have any answers, but it's certainly on our radar and it'll come faster than we know. Next year, in the middle school, our core teachers will be practicing. And by practicing, we mean at conferences, they'll be explaining to parents using success criteria how their students are doing in the class as far as learning goes. So that is where we are now. We really did try to give you a high-level overview. So we know there's lots of down, down work that's happening, but if you have questions, we will do our best to, to answer those.
So are other districts doing similar work? Is there some sort of other that can be a part of in terms of how this rolls out within the schools?
As far as grading?
As far as grading and just resources for, in general, for doing this work?
Yes, ma'am. The, the unpacking process is done in every district from what I know. I mean, MD supports this as a process to really make sure you go depth or deep into your curriculum. So you may hear about power standards, prioritize standards, gold standards. People use different names, but everyone is doing some sort of process to get to that. We, we, I would say that we've done a lot more work with teachers really understanding the success criteria. I think a lot of times, people equate a one, two, three, four with a A, B, C, D, and that's not what we're trying to do with success criteria. So when our teachers go through this process, they are really understanding what learning looks like, and that's where those conversations, "How does this become a grade?" And, and there's a few districts that have jumped into that in the secondary level. We just went to a meeting last week with the metro curriculum leaders and Eastern Carver County presented. They're about eight years into their secondary process, and they've revised it probably eight times. So it's, it's, it's happening, and there's definitely work out there, and we're all trying to work together to, to make it happen anymore. But it's a switch in culture and a switch in philosophy to have ownership of learning in the student mind versus the teacher saying, "You will learn this." And so I think our secondary teachers are going to reap the benefits of all of the elementary work in a few years, but that's, that's kind of the wheel of change in education, right? So, but there's a lot happening and we're doing a great job keeping up with it, I think.
Kelly, if you could kind of give me a, I'm trying to understand this vertical alignment. You know, there was slide six, you talked about it. So tactically, I mean, when I look at the example you've given us, benchmark nine-five-one-one, I'm assuming that was what in column B. But then what is the goal of, what, what are you guys really trying to do? Get all those boxes yellow and make sure there's Xs in all of them? Is that what vertical alignment means? Or can you give me a better definition of what vertical alignment is?
Yeah, so as, as Dr. Lawrence mentioned, some of the standards have the same language in each grade. And so when we have those standards as a prioritize standard, making sure that that learning looks different at each level. So the vertical alignment of the standard is going to get more complex as that student goes through the system. While the standard language is the same, the success criteria is going to get more complex. So making sure that it aligns from what they've done in ninth grade, and then we build on that in tenth grade, and we build on that in eleventh grade, and we build on that in twelfth grade.
So for example, in music, if you go to the Minnesota standards, they're, they're lumped together nine through twelve. And so we're trying to take those apart and put them into certain areas. So pitch, for example, identifying pitch. So you've heard on, you know, talent shows, "Oh, you're a pitchy dog," right? How does, how's a student recognize when something's flat or sharp? Well, the, the gradations between knowing pitch as a ninth grader should be different than it as a tenth, tenth or eleventh grader. So that's where that's vertical alignment and spiraling comes in. And in some cases, where the course is unique, it may not need to be repeat, revisited or repeated in another grade level, where in other courses, it does become more complex, and so it does need to be revisited. And we just want to make sure that we're making no gaps or any overlaps that are not necessary in that process. Does that help?
Yeah, and then all the teachers that are part of these unpacking and bringing this together, so the different grade levels are working together to make sure that happens? Or is that what your guys' role is to oversee to make sure that that happens?
We oversee it for consistency. Yep, and, and some of the conversations that are happening are amazing because teachers will look at this and, and say to themselves, "I need to assess differently." Yes, perhaps you do, you know? Looking at a test that has twenty questions on math, some of them are problem-solving, some of them are applying algorithms, some of them are, and so knowing which ones students are, need more work on is really important versus just an eighteen out of twenty score. So yes.
So, but just going back to this chart, it isn't that all the Xs would be filled in, but when you have a standard or a benchmark that's, there are no Xs, then how are we missing that? That's part of the sequence.
Absolutely, and, and the Xs are indicating that that's been prioritized. And I think that's one, one thing that people often think is that you're just teaching the prioritize standards, and, and that's not the case. Those are the standards we're ensuring learning of and ensuring mastery of. But the other standards are certainly being taught. So what this will do is if they've in eighth grade or in sixth grade prioritized the standard four-one-one or six-four-one-one, in seventh grade, if they've done the same standard, they just need to make sure the success criteria is built upon. But for example, in sixth grade, they've done six-four-four-four, but that wasn't done in seventh or eighth grade. So you can kind of see where that, so this chart helps teachers see where those standards, where that will spiral back for that student. And they'll also be able to see that success criteria that's built upon.
Let me ask one more quick question. So when you say, when you're talking about the standards or when we look at the standards, so the standard is, is this the, like, the Common Core standards that are kind of across the country, accepted standards or Minnesota standards or?
Yep, Minnesota's not a Common Core state. Minnesota is a Common Core plus state. I think that's what they would tell you. They often look at the Common Core, but then we also add some pieces in there that we believe are important as a state. So the majority of the core cour-, or the core courses all have state standards. There are few others. Health and physical education have national standards, but the state also released some standards. If there are not state standards, then we use national standards like the world language ones. But the Department of Ed has a ten-year cycle right now of reviewing standards. And hopefully, in January, we plan to bring to the curriculum advisory kind of the proposed curriculum advisory cycle. So once the state releases standards, then your area becomes a focus year, and you get a chance to dive into those standards and have the same conversations. So that'll be happening about every five years as an intense focus year, understanding that continuous improvement happens throughout all ten years of the new cycle. But Minnesota has not chosen to adopt the Common Core yet.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Eight point two is the first reading of policies, like five hundreds, and we will welcome Assistant Superintendent Mike Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Burnett, Board members, Dr. Jacobus, and student representatives. This evening, the select policies below in the five hundred series for students were chosen for review and editing. These policies have been reviewed by select district staff groups and revised to reflect updates in Minnesota statute, definition of terms, legal references, and cross-references. Board Policy Committee members Sharon Van Leeuwen, Heather Hirsch, and Michelle Whitty were able to review the policies and made recommendations for board information and subsequent action. Last week, we had met to discuss these as well. While five oh four dress code is not included as a reading tonight, as a procedure, I did place a copy in front of you this evening for five oh four, as I was directed to do. First off, for policy five oh seven, corporal punishment, it was consistent per MSBA policy, and there is no change. I'll entertain any questions or comments in between each policy tonight. For five oh nine point one, intra-district transfers. For 509.1, intra-district transfers. There were minor edits to reflect present procedure with assistance from legal counsel. Used the, the help from Student Information as well with intra-district transfers, as well as Assistant Superintendent Nielsen. The last page regarding number six with requests for principals for their children to attend, that has been a, a procedure we followed in the past. We just needed to publicize it, request of our legal counsel. Any questions on 509.1? 510, student activities. Once again, consistent per MSBA model policy with minor edits. This was from Student Information Activities Directors and me. First of all, the general statement of policy. In my experience with adding this language, it would help for parents who are not District 833 enrolled or who wish to be or claim to be in the future, as well as homeschool students. So adding that would help me, it would help our Activities Directors and it would also help Student Information and parents for decision-making. And that, very small edits. Any question on that? 510.2, athletic and activity scholastic eligibility. Once again, minor edits to reflect procedures or present procedure. This was where we had all ADs present as well as Principal Jim Smokrovich from East Ridge High School and myself. For Part 2A, registration credit check, we just decided to delete the years to keep this consistent until if we were to have changes in graduation requirements in the future. For Part B, for progress monitoring, what we, what we decided to delete from that was so that it didn't look like we would just check at the six-week point. We wanted to make sure that at any time, two, three weeks if kids are struggling, we wanted to get involved to be able to help. So that was the basis behind that edit. Other than that, no other changes. Thank you. 510.4, extended field trip form. Very simply, just to add a little bit with the address and phone number. You see those pretty much every month from me where I'm checking those off and sometimes you'll see my writing, please include address. We just thought we'd make it a lot easier for everyone. Next, on student fundraising. While this is consistent per MSBA model policy, we really want to pay attention to future procedures with this and that's where I will be working with principals. I've had discussions with Chris Blackburn in finance about this, where we would provide a report at the end of the school year for the board on student fundraising.
And Mike, well, that, is that just based on district? Or like, you know, with the Minnesota High School League too, what rules they have around student fundraising?
Well, this would, this would just, I guess this would be any type of or any school-sponsored student fundraising from all of our schools and we break it down by school as well as by level, K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12. I mean, we could break it down and, I, I think when we get to that point in the spring, we could find out, you know, what the board would require. I'd probably speak more to Dan Pion about that as well, but I think the, the first time to do this, to share this with the board for fundraising throughout the entire year. Not necessarily a state high school sanctioned requirement that this would be.
Gotcha, okay.
Next on to student recruiting. Our changes were suggested by Student Information Activities Directors, Principal Smokrovich and me. The first edit to that general statement of policy, we took that language from Fridley School District. We liked it. We, we thought that when we come to the board in Jan, or I'm sorry, in July or August, when we get approval to be part of the Minnesota State High School League, it truly starts with the board's decision to do so. So in looking through other school district policies on this, we wanted to add that. We, we felt that was, we felt strongly that should be added and we liked the language. For Part C on item two, we wanted to give examples of encouraging others, would be parents, guardians and community members to have that undue influence on other families and athletes or people who wish to come into the district. And then finally, for definitions, this was, this came through Student Information where it's, it is a type of privilege or a benefit, what we had highlighted there. And that had occurred in the past. And once again, we just, we need to learn from the past and to place it in policy where it's very clear. Any questions on 517? And last but not least, on the pledge of allegiance, 531, very simple. Consistent per model policy with no change.
So final call for questions? Okay, we'll be back in January.
I just had one comment. So I, I wanted to thank you and the group for all your work on student dress and appearance, actually, and the procedures. I mean, I think sort of in the spirit of the parents tonight and talking about bullying, I think we looked seriously at how appearance and dress can factor into the student environment and I think made some really great choices there. So I want to thank you and the staff for all the work done on that. I feel like it is real clear in the policy in terms of helping kids to feel comfortable and be who they are at school. So, thank you.
Thank you, I'll pass that on.
All right, and so after our first reading of our policies, there is an opportunity for public comment if anyone would like to approach the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eight point three, public hearing for taxes payable 2019. Our Director of Finance, Dan Pion.
I'm going to bring some water. I'm going to be for a long time. Oh, yeah. Brought some papers with.
You take all the time you want, Dan.
Good evening, Chair Brunet, members of the board, Superintendent Jacobus and student members. Tonight, we will present our public hearing for taxes payable in 2019. As we'll go through the PowerPoint, you'll see that the requirements and the reasons for this, this presentation. Tonight, we'll also talk about the current budget and, and then we'll talk about the taxation system in Minnesota for our school districts. And as you know, in the budget, we, we're constantly looking at ways and worry about where costs come in and costs come out. And with the 200 and the $30 million budget, there's lots of different lines. As you know, one of the ones that give me the most stress is, you know, when it snows and we have to pay for snow removal. And of course, we have to pay for it, it's a service we need, but the more snow is, closer we get to our, get to our budget. And I think I probably have told you this, maybe I've told you sort of, I don't know, I've done 25 of these taxation hearings, can't remember all the stories I've told. But that one time, I don't know if I told you about when my brother and his, we're talking about snow removal, my brother and his wife moved to Minneapolis a long, long time ago and, and they were just country bumpkins, you know, coming from down by Nicklet and so. And so they didn't know what to do when it snowed, but they listened to WCCO and they always told them, well, if you listen, they'll tell you where to park if you're in Minneapolis. Because Minneapolis, it's very hard to park your cars. So anytime there's a snow emergency, turn that radio on and find out where you should put your car. So the first time it snows, Steve turns on the radio and it's a, "Snow emergency tonight. Please, you have to park on the even side of the street." So he goes out there, makes sure the car's on the even side of the street. Now, a couple of weeks later, another snowstorm and they turn on the radio and they say, "You need to park on the outside of the street." So then he makes sure his car's parked on the outside of the street, everything's fine. Couple of weeks later, there's a snowstorm and they slept in and he woke up and, "Oh, I didn't find out what side of the street I'm supposed to park on." And, and Margot says to him, "Well, maybe this time we'll just, you should just leave it in the garage." And it, it kind of shows that you can't think, things way too literally. And when you look at some of the numbers we have and, and you, you got to follow the rules, but sometimes you got to make sure that, you know, you're not taking things too literally and not fulfilling what you're trying to do. So tonight, we will, oops. So tonight, we're going to have a tax hearing presentation. Why are we doing this? Well, because state law requires a public meeting. It has to be between November 25th and December 28th. It must be after 6:00 PM. It can be part of a scheduled meeting like tonight. And you may adopt the final levy at the same meeting and you will need to adopt it tonight because it'll be your only chance to adopt it because there's no more school board meetings this, this month and this must be adopted by December 31st. And the state law says that we have to talk about the current budget, that we have to talk about last year's revenue expenditures, we have to talk about proposed property tax levy, including the percent increase and the reasons for these increases. So tonight, the agenda is first we'll talk about background on school funding, stuff that you've probably heard before, but as you know, I repeat myself many, many times. The district's budget and the tax levy, and then we'll allow for public comment. I like to put this in here to talk about really how schools are funded in Minnesota. And we like to remind people that the Constitution requires that there be money set aside for funding public schools. And we like to remind the legislature that too, that they should, they're supposed to provide actually a uniform system of funding for public schools. And sometimes we don't see that uniformity, I guess, in our minds because we have 340 school districts with all different kind of property values and commercial wealth, then residential wealth. And the dollars don't spend, are not raised in the same manner in different districts. For instance, to raise $100 per pupil, $200, we'll say $200 per pupil in Hopkins, it costs the homeowners less than to raise $200 in South Washington County schools. And that's mainly because of the different mixture of the property wealth and property values. And one solution to that, that the board, that the board, the legislature has tried is, is having tax aids to level those out, but they never really seem to have enough money to do that, so they're still not leveled. So as a result, the school funding is highly regulated by the state. So a lot of what we talk about tonight in the levy is our, is our numbers that are regulated by the state. The state tells us what the numbers should be. There are some that the voters and the school board get to say what the numbers are going to be, but most of them are regulated by the state. And as we look at our regular general education aid, those are based on formulas. And the extra monies that can come in would be coming through voter-approved operating levies, which are, we'll talk about during the levy process. The general education revenue formula is a number that at some point was, was derived and then it's basically manipulated, either frozen or increased by certain percentages every two years by the state legislature. But that number has been established many, many years ago and I don't know if it truly reflects what it costs to educate a child in the state of Minnesota, much less educate a child in South Washington County schools. In fact, if you just took that number since 2003 and had to keep pace with inflation, it would be $618 more per pupil. But it's not. So those gaps are filled in by voter-approved operating referendums. This chart shows really the gap as it keeps on going. And this is one thing that, that lobbyists and, well, we don't say lobbyists, but organization, educational organizations like to talk to legislators about is at some point, can you catch that up? Because inflation happens, no matter what you say, it happens. And it happens in the form of increased prices for not only fuel and supplies, but also health insurance, which is a big cost for us, and of course, market range salaries for our teachers. And as that lags behind and we don't have enough gap to fill it, then we find ourselves into shortfalls. Another key factor in the budgets lately has been the underfunding of special education. And according to the, to Minnesota Department of Education, special education programs throughout the state are underfunded by $697, $697 million, over about 40% is underfunded. It translates to a shortfall of about $5,700 per special education student. So how do we make up for that? Well, of course, that money comes from the general fund. And there's a calculation by Department of Education, excuse me, and there's a calculation that we do locally. But as we look at that, basically, it's the difference, it's called the cross subsidy, special education cross subsidy. And basically, it's the difference between the amount of money we get in aid, both from the state and federal sources, and the amount of money we spend on special education. And for instance, the cross subsidy in this district is about $17 million. So because of those pressures and the funding that's lacking because of the inflation, $618 and the cross subsidy for special education, there's a growing dependence on referendum revenue. And that's how that ties back to our tax levy because much of our tax levy is an operating referendum that's been approved by the voters. Back in 1993, about 65% of the districts in the state had an operating referendum revenue. And that was, they used to call it an excess levy because they figured that's for extra stuff. Now, most every district, all but maybe one, have an operating referendum of some sort and they average almost $1,000 per student. And it provides 13% of the general fund revenue, meaning that this is crucial money that's used just, just to keep operating just our normal general education. There's not a lot of extras included in that. One thing too, we want to remember about tonight is changes in the tax levy does not necessarily mean that we have more revenue. The tax levy is based on many state-determined formulas plus voter-approved referendums. Some increases in the tax levy are offset by decreases in state aid. For instance, if you look at what's called operating capital levy, we are told you're going to get this amount of money. For us, in operating capital, it is about $5.6 million. And that's, that's a source we use to do as it says. We buy textbooks with it, we buy computers with it, we use it to buy desks and things like that. Well, that number's set and then the state says, well, this is the way your property looks today, so this much is aid and this much is levy. And if that stuff shifts, they just, instead of getting more money because the levy went up, it just means that there's less state aid coming. So as I said, an increase in taxes doesn't always mean an increase in the budget. Another thing that's a little odd about having this hearing now, and it's, it's interesting to me, but it might not be interesting to other people, but we are in a different budget cycle than cities and counties. And these meetings were set up by laws, I talked earlier, because cities and counties actually start their budget in January. So they're actually working on their budget and they're presenting this levy and receiving input and they can still make changes. We are at a different cycle. We're in a cycle of July through June. So the school board here approved the budget way back in June. And we've been working within that budget and now we get to this hearing already. Of course, we're going to, we're going to present the levy, but the budget we're going to talk about has already been in place. There isn't a whole lot of changes you can make, especially in programming, as you know, because once people start doing their programs and teachers in place, there isn't like changes that can be made. So it's an informational meeting and I'm happy to do it, as you know. It's, it is the Super Bowl for business managers, but it, we can't make a lot of changes to the budget at this point, except for what we revised, but we can't make changes to programs either. And then also, what we're approving tonight doesn't hit our revenue till a year from now. So the taxes collected in 2019 do not hit the financial statements we have until our fiscal year of 1920. It's just a little quirk that we're a little different. It'd be a lot easier if they were just all lined up and it would all think about that, but that's just the way it is. As far as our budget goes, you've heard this many times, but we're broken down into different funds. We have the general fund, which is our main operating fund, and that's the one that we always always watch the most closely and we have to make sure that we're not in, call it statutory operating debt, which means that your fund balance would be less than negative 2.5% of your, of your expenditures. So basically, everything is kind of based on your total expenditures and how much you have left. The board has a policy here of that fund balance should be five to nine percent and as we, and they've allowed it to go a little lower than that until we finally catch up and we'll be talking a little bit about that. Food service budget, that one, that fund is, is a break even one and the board also approves food ser, lunch prices and those are probably the biggest factor which make that budget break even. Community service is a fees-based budget mainly, there's some aid and some levy in there, but that is mainly another break even budget. Building construction is in there, it's used, when only when we're building. That's in and out. Debt service is used to collect the money and then make our bond payments. Then the trust, trust fund is for scholarships and then internal service, we use that to pay some, some severance obligations. And then our new OPE trust fund, which we use to pay our health, other post-employment benefits, which are health benefits that are owed to retired employees. So as we talk about our budget, this slide, if you, if you read it a little more closely and look at it when you get a chance, this is a publication that we, that we put into the, into our official newspaper by law by September 30th. And it shows all of our budget, it shows what happened last year, it shows how we ended up in the fund balance, and then it shows what our budget is for the next year. And to make things a little easier, the bottom line is that, that our fund balance at the end of, of 2017, 18, which was June 30th, ended up at about $8.4 million. Still under our fund balance policy, but this was the last year before we get the new operating referendum revenue. So we're, we're trying to just make sure we stay balanced. We actually showed, you know, a, we showed the improvement to our fund balance of about $1.5 million. Our, what we have done now is, the audit's done, you'll hear about it, it's an exciting time. This is actually the whole audit book here in draft form. We hope you all read it when you get in a couple of weeks. But we showed an improvement in our fund balance of about a million dollars. And we really budgeted for a worse performance, so we're, we're pretty happy about that, as you can see how happy I am. But I think what's exciting is that we got our unassigned improvement of about $800,000. So as we look to the future, with the new revenue coming in and trying to keep our controls in place, we can see, we're looking at next year, which we're budgeting and we expect to hit that, of an improvement of our fund balance of $2.5 million. So we should be finally back up over $10 million. And our goal has to be much higher than that. We like to be 10% of our expenditures, which of course would be about $230 million, I mean, $23 million, so. But we're on our way, we think, and we're moving in that direction. And this is a report that we published to show everybody where, what we have for money and where the money's going in different, in the different funds. As far as in general, if you look at the total revenue of the district, it's for 1819. And it fluctuates like between years and some bigger chunks, only because construction, the construction money comes and goes. And if we have big projects going, you're going to have a lot of it. But you'll see that we have about $318 million, $319 million in revenues. And $239 million this year is going to be in the general fund. And then we also have the debt service, it's $54 million, like I said, that's an in and out. And the community services, and food service is about $10 million, community service is about $15 million. As we look in the general fund, you can see that most of our revenue comes from state aid. And like I said, the state aid is derived by multiplying the numbers, students you have by the general basic formula. And then there's some other formula aids that come in there based on that. And that's why when we look at the formula, we're always waiting to find out what the legislation's going to do and if they're going to raise it 2%, we know if it's one and a half. And when I do my projections for future years, I usually, you know, have to kind of guess at what might happen. I'm a little more involved than the average person with the legislature as I chair the municipal legislative committee, so I kind of get a better idea of what's going on. But I think the information age has really gotten people a lot more aware of what the state legislature does. But that's all comes from the state. And then the biggest, second biggest chunk of our revenue is property tax levy, about $54 million, most of that being operating referendums and local optional revenue. So we've, we've been approved for $2,251 per pupil by the voters, which will be starting in the 1819 school year. That, that's including the last approval that we had, so that, that counts for about $45 million of our revenue. And then if we look at our expenditures in the general fund, if you look at it by program, program meaning, you know, what part of our services are we spending the money on, you can see that regular instruction is about 48% and vocational and special ed instruction add another 18%. So you can see that just straight in, plus your instructional support services, and I'll show this on a different slide to make it a little easier, and then pupil support. So regular instruction would be, like we said, the regular ed instruction, mostly teachers and supplies we need in the classroom. Vocational, self-explanatory, special ed is all the special ed instruction we do. Instructional support would be those that support the classroom, but from a different levels, say counselors and social workers, things like that. Pupil support would be things like transportation is probably the biggest expense in that, in that category, and so we got to get the kids there. Sites and buildings, that's where we keep the kids warm or cold or comfortable. And then district and school administration is about 4% and then other charges about 2%. So as, as we talk about where does one dollar of revenue go in this district, you can see that 50 cents plus 19 for special ed and instructional support, about 5 cents. You're looking at 74 cents of every dollar is going directly into the classroom and then you have another 11 cents to your dollar that mainly to maintain the buildings that hold the classrooms. So we really try to put a lot of our money right back into the schools and the classrooms. And then of course, we have to put about 9 cents every dollar into transporting the kids to school, leaving about 3 cents for administration and 3 cents for district administration. And then finally, of interest is what do we spend our money on? Not where do we spend our money, but what do we spend it on? And as you know, we're a service industry, so we spend most of our money on wages and benefits. Of course, our salaries, about 60% and our employee benefits, about 22%. So most, all the money goes to salaries and wages and that's why, you know, as we look at staffing is a key factor and also contract negotiations. And then of course, we have some purchase services, some supplies, some capital and some other. So as we talk about the property tax levy, just a little background, I won't get too deep into it, but every owner of taxable property pays property taxes to various taxing jurisdictions. What that means is that every tax, every property tax owner is going to have a tax bill that breaks it into three different places they pay their taxes to. So you're going to pay taxes to the school district you live in, you're going to pay taxes to the city or township you live in, and you're going to pay taxes to the county you live in. And every jurisdiction sets their own tax levy and then those are all sent to the county and they'll calculate how those taxes are divided up based on property values. Everybody has received a proposed taxes in the last couple of weeks. And on there, it breaks down the three categories of what the taxes were last year and what was, is proposed for this year. And the county auditor has determined that based on what you did in September when you approved a proposed tax levy. Also on this, on this notice is, it lists where this hearing tonight is for each jurisdiction. School districts levy taxes in many, many different areas. Some are statutory, some are different programs that are going on. It can be up to 40. The levy limits are set by the state, meaning that's the maximum you can, you can levy in that category. And then of course, the limits for, for operating referendums are set by the voters, because they vote on what's, what's the most you can levy in that area. Some key steps in the property tax, we'll go through this whole slide, but really what happens is your property is assessed. Legislature sets formulas for how levies can be made. The county auditor calculates each parcel, how it can be assessed. The Department of Ed will, will go in there and figure out by statute what everybody can levy. And it gets to the school board and you, you approve the levy. You can either under levy or you can levy amounts in different categories. And then we send it back to the county auditor and they'll send out tax bills. The point of this is of the seven steps, the only one the school district and the board can control is step number six, where you determine what your levy is based on what I present to you, based on what the state said it should be. And there's a few categories where you can levy less if you'd like. Quickly, schedule events. MDE, they, Minnesota Department of Education gave us a draft of what the proposed levy is going to look like. I presented that to you in September. You approved the preliminary levy. And the rule is that the levies, what you approved in September and what you're approving in December, the levy can go down, but it can't go up unless you have an election going on. This year, we didn't have any elections. So you can levy less, but you can't levy more. So since the state's always calculating and things can change, that we're allowed, the school board is allowed to levy the maximum in September. But we have a pretty good idea when we give you the numbers September, what it's going to be. And then of course, they mail the statements and we're having this hearing tonight and that tonight, we hope you would approve the levy. Our levy tonight is an increase of about $6.3 million, or about 7.7%. This is a decrease of what you proposed in September of about $688,000. We also refinanced some bonds this year and reduced that levy, what would that levy would have been $407,000 more if you went to refinance the bonds. And we're under levying in the alternative teacher compensation program by about $281,000, meaning that the levy max that the state gave us is, you're going to levy, we're proposing and recommending that you levy $280,000 less because we do the, that budget and we see what we need and then we see how much money would come in from the levy and aid. This document shows the levy in the different categories. This is also the document that's on my next item, that's in the action item, because we'll ask you to approve this levy. As you can see, it's a, the total is a 7.7% increase. You can see the different categories of where it increases and I'll talk about those in more detail. And talk about some of the levy changes. Some of the levy changes, you see, you saw an increase of about $1.2 million in voter-approved referendums. Now, the reason for that is projecting the increase in enrollment. And you say, well, why does that matter? Well, that levy is determined by taking the amount that's been approved plus the local optional revenue, which totals $2,251 per pupil, and you multiply it by the number of pupil units you have. And if the pupil units go up, then that month, that's going to go up because you're raising more money, but you're serving more pupils too. And then there was a few different changes between aid and levy again, based on tax equalization factors. We're increasing the levy for, compared to last year for alternative teacher compensation by $800,000 as we, as Kelly was talking earlier, as we have some different coaching models and instructional models, and we're using these funds to roll out those models. There's adjustments of about $786,000 and that's mainly because as we do levies every year, putting estimates in and as we get, have more kids than we thought we would have, they'd adjust that up. And we have different other levies, like we levy for unemployment costs. Well, I kind of guess on that and what actually happens, either, either up or down, they'll make adjustments all the time. So they're always adjusting the levy based on what actually happened. There used to be bigger adjustments when health and safety program was in place because that one really depended on what people could do, but now they've changed it to long-term facility maintenance and it's a little more steady. And then debt service went up, although it would have went up further if you went to refinance, but that went up about $1.8 million. In debt service, we have to levy 105% of what we owe, in case we, they have troubles with collections. This county is pretty good about collections. What happens to the extra money? Well, the debt service fund will go up to a point and then every year, MDE will calculate really what it should be and they'll say, you have excess, and then they'll take that excess and lower the levy the next year, giving the money back to the taxpayers. We do have, we had a couple of long-term facility maintenance bonds that we put into place and we wanted to save some money by paying the, some, some interest upfront, so we loaded those into the next year, into this year. So what can impact somebody's individual taxes? Many factors can cause a tax bill for an individual increase or decrease. Changes in the values of individual, individual property, that's probably the most common one. So as you look at your proposed taxes, you want to look at what the valuations are, what it was the year before and what it is now and why do they change? Well, there's many reasons, maybe it was an undeveloped plot before, maybe there are improvements made to the home or the little property. The county assessor's job is really to assess all the values at 100% of market rate. Well, you know, that's kind of an impossible task because the market goes up and down, but our county assessor usually runs about 95%. So they do a pretty good job. So most of the properties are assessed, really at what they would sell at, but you never know until you sell it how much it's worth, obviously. So we'll just look at a few different properties to see the tax impacts. The 19 are preliminary estimates based on the best data available, available we have right now. They were prepared by Ellers, our municipal financial advisors. Commercial industry properties examples are for property in the city of Woodbury. School tax, taxes in other parts of the district may be slightly higher or lower due to variations in the impact of fiscal disparity programs. This slide, we won't talk about too much, it's a little busy, but if you take, you can take a look at it later, but this one actually takes the type of properties, residential homestead and commercial and industrial. And as you can see in the one column, that it's got the estimated market value and then the change in the, in the taxes between 18 and 19. I have a little more easier ones to read here. So on a $150,000 residential property, you'll see that the tax change in between 18 and 19 is about $28. On a $250,000 property, the change is about $49 per year for school taxes. A $300,000 property, it's $61 per year. As we look at a million-dollar commercial industrial property, you'll see the change is about $153 per year. So these are the changes in the taxes based on the proposed levy tonight. Just a couple of notes for people that need some help with their property taxes, there's the Minnesota Homestead Credit Refund, a circuit breaker. There's special rules on it and I would advise people to look on the Department it, and I would advise people to look on the Department of Revenue website, or call their county to see if they qualify for some of these if they need to. There's some other property tax refund things available, depending on income level and things like that. And there's also senior citizen property tax deferral, in which you could defer your property taxes. And once again, there's some, there's some rules on that. So what are the next steps? We will accept public comments. The board will accept public comments on the proposed levy. And then later on, as we go into the action items, we will ask you to certify the 2019 property tax levy. So you can open up to public comment if you like.
All right. Mr. Matter. Would you like to come up to the podium, please?
I just, I have a question. Does the school district receive more money for a special education student versus a regular student from the state?
Yes.
Is it substantial?
It's not, it's not covered, it's about 40 percent of what it would need to be to educate that child.
But I mean, let's say a regular one gets a thousand, and a special ed would get, in my example, two thousand, double? Or, I'm just curious.
Well, the, they look at the general education revenue, we won't add the other factors, is $6,312 per student. The special ed student gets that, too. Or, we get money for that, too. Plus, it's about, we get about $25 million in revenue, so it adds about $2,000.
Oh, okay. And then, my other question was, well, a year ago, when I got my proposed tax statement from the county, my taxes was actually going to go down $100, and then it ended up going up 200. And I called the county, and they said that was because of the levy that it passed is not factored in yet. So am I going to get another surprise?
No, there's no elections this time.
No, but you know what I mean? Well, there was no levy or nothing, so, so actually, the amount that they estimated will be true.
They'll come down a little bit from our end, because we're lowering the levy.
Oh, okay, okay. But I mean, I mean, last year, it was a surprise. It was a surprise.
And we kind of, and boards can be able to answer those questions, I tell them about it all the time, but it kind of had, the county has to put it that way. So by the time they published that, we already knew the result of the election, but it was too late for them to fix it.
Yeah, I, I, that's what they explained to me. So I just didn't know if there's another surprise coming. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Oh, want to come up to the podium?
Can we just ask questions from the floor?
No, you have to go up here.
Other way.
Members of the board, I have a question that I couldn't quite hear, as you were speaking early on in the presentation. Did you say that an increase in taxes does not always cause an increase in revenue?
Yes.
And can you say why? Or did I miss that?
Because some of the revenue sources are a combination of state aid and levy. And if your property valuations change in different ways, they may lower the aid and make you levy more. So you're only going to get a flat amount on top, and then they determine what part is aid and what part is levy.
And did you say that there was an approved expenditure per student in this district?
Yes. What are approval levies that total $2,251 per student? I think I did break them all out, but we have ones that passed in different elections four different times, and so they're a little staggered. We have one for 700, if I remember them all, $771 per student. We have one for $525 per student. We have one for $375 per student. We have one for $155 per student.
And you said that the debt was refinanced to save some money, but did you stretch out the repayment date?
Yeah. So when we did the refunding, we moved the payments out, we moved them out. But we didn't move them out very much, because we don't want to get too far stretched on those. So we actually just took advantage of interest rates dropping.
So you did not stretch out the repayment date?
A couple of years at the most.
And did you say that the state required in 2019 a levy reduction? Did I misunderstand? I thought you said that the state required a levy reduction for 2019. I may have misheard.
Yeah, I don't recall that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, or?
Well, I think, just, you know, again, one more clarifying point, too, about the refinancing. That one truly goes strictly right back to the taxpayers, because that, you know, I think there's been confusion that savings could be used into the general fund, and what happens when we refinance, that truly is a savings directly right back to the taxpayer at that point. Because we cannot use those funds, you can't use your building funds to cover general obligations. So these funds that Dan presented are very strict on, money can't be moved between a number, some of them you can, but the majority of them are dedicated funds that are funded just for that purpose.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, like touchdown dance or anything afterwards? All right, 9.0, discussion items. We don't have any this evening. 10.0, our action items. 10.1 is the approval of the resolution establishing polling locations for school district elections, and our superintendent, Keith Jacobus, will present.
Thanks. Each year, by law, we need to establish our polling places for the next November election. And in the packet, there are a number of precincts that have now been identified, based on what the cities and county, or the county has done with polling places. And so this is something that we do each year. There are some changes, and they're listed. So it is a resolution, and I don't think that, since it's public, the data, they have to go through each polling place. But this is, again, as you know, we do this each year, and so I'd ask you to pass the resolution to prepare us for next November.
All right. So entertain a motion to approve? Second? So moved by Sharon, second by Pat. We need a roll call? Okay. So I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Any questions or comments, or?
Well, just, I just wanted to make a little bit of clarity. Again, you know, we just came out of a general election, so there's a lot more polling places that, for folks to vote, when we have a school election, because we're an off-cycle election timeframe, there's less polling places. So you want to make sure that you check your, you know, when we get closer to November of next year for voting. And I just publicly, you know, again, we get in these debates, whether we should be in a, you know, general elections for our school board elections and stuff like that. And I've, I've always been a big believer to be in an off-cycle, because this way we can be quote-unquote "the issue" that people really know. We don't get lost in all of the governor and the senators and all that congressional seats. People can really focus on this district and the people that are running. So I've always been a proponent of being in an off-cycle election period, and so I appreciate that we're continuing that moving forward.
Pat Druskal?
Yes.
Heather Hirsch?
Yes.
Michelle Witty?
Yes.
Katie Schwartz is absent. Sharon Van Leer?
Yes.
Ron Caff?
Yes.
Tracy Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. So 10.2, approval of our final tax levy for tax payable in 2019, and Dan will join us again.
I'm back. Good evening again. You want me to do the PowerPoint again? Do you remember it all? I want to remind you, before we start, too, that we will have the audit results presented next board meeting. And I, it came out pretty good as far as, well, it came out perfect as far as operationally, because we had no findings, and I think credit should go to our staff that did a great job again, and everybody that contributes to that. But tonight, I'm just asking you to approve the final tax levy for taxes payable in 2019. The levy, as you can see in the attachment, is $88,593,748. It's an increase of 7.7 percent, and different categories are listed, but I think we've explained enough about the levy. But if you have any questions, you're welcome to ask them, and I'm just asking you to approve this levy tonight.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And second.
Moved by Sharon, second by Ron. Any questions? All of them in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. 10.3 is the approval of property liability insurance provider.
Good evening. Hello.
Fancy meeting you here.
One of our largest, actually, one of our large, a large bill for us that is one that we can monitor and keep costs, and get more money back for the general fund and for the classrooms, is our commercial property and liability insurance. And our premiums last year were about $755,000. So what I do is, I go out and what call, do what called is market it. I have different agents and different possibilities, and I have them go out and present our property and our loss claims and our liability issues to different carriers, and then in the hope that, I mean, if you stay somewhere too long, it gets a little stale, and the rates start creeping up. And we get lots of different claims for different things, and some of them are frivolous, some of them are things that happen. You might remember that our sprinklers went off at the East Ridge gym floor back around Memorial Day. That was an unexpected cost of about $460,000 to fix that floor, because water ran on it for an extended period of time. Because we have insurance, obviously, it only cost us $25,000, that's our deductible. So those are the kind of things that we look at. Well, anyway, to make a long story short, we got proposals from different agents, and basically from three different carriers. And one was our current carrier, which is Hanover Insurance Company for liability, and Chubb for property. They had a proposal from a company called Liberty Insurance for both property and liability. And we had a proposal from an organization called ALPS, which is a consortium of eight districts, and they want us to be number nine, and they pool these insurance needs. There's different factors involved. They weigh as long as possible, give the numbers, in case, you know, a claim comes in or something like that, they want to put that in their records. So by the time we got the numbers, I didn't feel comfortable asking the board to move to a new concept like ALPS, but I know it might be a great possibility. So I asked our current carrier to extend our contract for six months, and we'll go to what's called now a July first renewal instead of a January first renewal. And I like that better, as someone that administers the insurance, because if it lines up with your school year, your claims line up a little better. You don't get a bunch of claims in December that belong to somebody else, and then you start January with a new carrier, and then you're mixing them back and forth. So I'd like to change that to July 1st, but we need insurance for six months. So Hanover and Chubb, they proposed to cover us for six more months, and they actually reduced the premium by $50,000. So I'm just asking you to approve using them for six more months. We'll come back in July, and have you approve, well, that could be the last meeting in June. Have you approve whatever we come up with. But this time, this time around, we'll have enough time to vet it before the financial advisor committee, and vet it before the audit and finance committee of the board. And if we do go that one way, we'll have a lot better idea. There's a few questions people are going to have if we join a co-op of districts, as opposed to just being fully insured by an outside vendor. But I'm happy to say, though, we will save $50,000 over the next six months, and pretty much guaranteed to save $100,000 over the next year, because the rates came in pretty good. Unless we have a whole bunch more sprinklers go off. But we'll see. So as you see attached, I think we got the attachment changed in time, that the proposal for just the next six months would be $337,000 from Chubb and Hanover. And I just want to get your okay to do that, and then let you know we'll be coming back in about four or five months.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Moved by Pat, and second by Sharon. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. 11.0, our reports and comments. 11.1 is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. On November 29th, district leaders presented our World's Best Workforce Report to the public here at the District Service Center. The World's Best Workforce is a report that helps schools, school districts set and monitor goals in five key areas: kindergarten readiness, third-grade literacy, closing the opportunity gap, career and college readiness, and high school graduation. Community members from a variety of committees in our district participated in the public meeting and had the opportunity to give feedback and ask questions about goals and strategies to improve student success. Additionally, during the same meeting, leaders also shared our district achievement and integration plan, goals, and results. Special thanks to Trina Patterson and Gretchen Chilcot for their help in creating the reports and sharing it with the public, as well as Brian Booth, who is responsible for preparing the report, and for the state, and planned and facilitated the evening meeting. On December 3rd, we held a district-wide staff development day. At the elementary level, teachers engage in professional development around mathematics instruction and standards-based instruction. Principals from various elementary schools helped to lead the training. At the secondary level, we organized a district-wide ed camp, which is a professional development model we have used in the past. Secondary teachers and administrators organized various lessons they had an interest in learning more about, such as Schoology, which is our learning management system, and standards-based instructions. Teachers from across the system stepped up to lead some amazing sessions to help each other in our day-to-day practice. And an ed camp is, people will put in a suggestion on something they want to learn more about or facilitate. So it's all driven by our knowledge base and wisdom in the district, and things that people want to delve into. And I attended a session facilitated by Dr. Keith Mays from the University of Minnesota, and he was talking with our social studies teachers at the secondary level about how to infuse more elements of African-American history more fully into our social studies curriculum, as we look at that curriculum. Following the ed camp, we hosted a district-wide event with a keynote speaker named Will Bowen. I can tell you a story about my comments, but Will spoke about complaint-free schools and how we can support each other in our communication processes. His message was inspiring and funny, while challenging us to communicate clearly and positively with each other when we have concerns. The event was aimed at continuing to improve our culture and climate, and prior to Will's presentation, I was able to announce the top Spark ideas, which we publicized, and now we'll go into the design thinking phase. And so there's some important ideas. As you know, one of the top large idea was around mental health, something that we'll be talking about, and we've been talking about. So we're excited about moving into that phase after the first of the year.
Thank you. 11.2 are the student board reports, and we will start with Hannah Pore tonight from East Ridge.
Hi. At East Ridge, we just finished out our school play, which we did Les Mis, which was super fun. And then the Hennepin Theater Trust Spotlight Education Program basically said that our entire production was, like, on their rating system, outstanding. And then we had four honorable mention students and five outstanding performance students, which was super cool, because we've never gotten that many students honored before. And then our student council is doing a blood drive this Friday. And in past years, we've gotten between 30 and 40 students, and this year, our student council went above and beyond, and we have around 85 students signed up for our blood drive, which is like a record at our school, which is really cool. And then our fellowship of Christian athletes did a dodgeball tournament for a children's hospital in St. Paul, and they actually raised quite a bit of money. I don't have the exact numbers, because they hadn't calculated them yet, but they did really, really well. And then our school recently adopted a Family Innovations Mental Health Support Center. And like, I know they do it at Park in Woodbury, but like, we just got one, and it was really cool, because now we have, like, the ability to, like, talk about mental illness and have it be, like, more incorporated and accepted at our school. And then as we get And then as we get closer to winter break, students are becoming more excited. And our NHS is selling cards. And our philosophy club today had a waffle party. And our anime club also had a pizza party. So they're all just kind of celebrating and getting excited for winter break.
Thank you. Lindsay from Park.
Okay. So on December 8th and 9th, we had two chamber plays, two one-acts. And they also took them to the elementary schools. So they got to be a part, the elementary schools got to see everything that was going on, how the plays were and everything. And it was really good. I've heard, I wasn't able to go and see, but it was good. So tomorrow, we are having a blood drive run by student council. I'm not really sure how many people have signed up because people have signed up like today still. So we have that all day tomorrow. Along with the 10 Days of Giving is next week, which we just donate toiletries, whatever our food shelf needs, we give to them and we raise whatever we can. And then whichever first-hour class raises the most amount of things gets a prize normally. Starting after break is each grade will have student assemblies, which are required for people to go to. So by grade, once a month, there'll be an assembly. But that's all the information I was giving. They're still trying to figure that out. Also, we have the Wolf Pack Welcome coming up on January 7th. And that's when the eighth graders come in from who's ever registered to actually go to Park in the boundaries. They come in and they see what Park is all about. And we have our clubs and our different language departments, different departments of the school there to show what they have to offer. And then overall, through the reviews of students, meeting one-on-one with principals or other staff members, they have all concluded that this year is different than the rest of the years. We're a lot more inclusive. We've definitely had a lot less behavioral issues, which is something that's really good and we're really striving towards. And Park has been transformed into this positive welcoming atmosphere. And our students get to volunteer a lot. And they also noted that they get the chance to volunteer and it makes them feel really good. So, and that's just coming from the students that, I don't know which ones they are. I don't know what grades they are in. But yeah, that came from all of them.
12.0 are our future meeting dates. 12.1, January 3rd of 19 is our regular board meeting. And then 12.2, January 17th, 19 is a regular school board meeting. So at the beginning of the meeting, we amended our agenda to include a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03 for labor negotiations. So I'll entertain a motion to move to closed session.
Second.
Move by Sharon, second by Ron. All of in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we may come back with a action item if anyone wants to stick around.
Second.
Move by Sharon, second by Pat. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. So now we will amend the agenda to add action item 10.4 to approve the wages and benefits of paraprofessionals, International Union of Operating Engineers, Local Number 70. Move by Michelle, second by Sharon. Any comment? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So now we will have action item 10.4. And we'll welcome Kevin Witherspoon to the podium.
Certainly. So tonight, I'm here to seek approval of wages and benefits for paraprofessionals, International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 70. Negotiations towards a new collective bargaining agreement between the South Washington County Schools and the paraprofessionals has resulted in a tentative two-year agreement effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. Members of the bargaining unit approved the tentative agreement December 5th, 2018. And I'll just give you a quick brief overview of the economic costing. So base rate of pay as of July 1st, 2018 is $15.45 an hour. And that will be retroactive to July 1st, 2018. And then the second year, base rate effective July 1st, 2019 is $15.75. When we look at benefits, there is no change to benefits for the first year effective July 1st, 2018. There were no changes to any of the benefits. And then January 1st, 2019, the district contribution will decrease by $23.44 for our single and family high deductible open access plans. No changes for all the other plans. Our VBOs will remain the same at $102.21. For single and family will remain $50. Effective January 1st, 2020, the district contribution will increase by $22.50. So we went down and then we'll go right back up where we were for single and family high deductible. No change in all of the plans and the VBOs and everything will stay the same. Any questions? All right. Administration recommends approval of this proposal.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve the paraprofessionals.
Second.
So move by Sharon and second by Pat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And if there is no further items, we are adjourned. Thank you.
So Keith, I owe you. What? I just checked my tax.
Is everybody going to junction seven? Oh, yeah, that's what you told me.
I am, I have a center.
[laughing].
Did you lose? I had to check with my.
Yeah, I owe you.